Planning Commission, public hearing for February 28th, 2023, I guess. So if you'd please stand for the flag pledge at this time.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a few items here to cover before we get started. One is please sign in at the door if you have not done so already. Please put electronic devices on silent mode. That'd be very appreciative. Also, please note that all the testimony is being recorded for the record. The task at a planning commission is to hold public hearings and make a recommendation to the county board of commissioners for approval or denial of requests for conditional and interim use permits, rezones, plats, and ordinance amendments in accordance with state law and county ordinance. The burden of approving a request meets the criteria for approval rests with the applicant. Okay, members at a planning commission are appointed by the county board of commissioners with one member from each of the five commissioner districts. Land service staff is here to assist the planning commission with its duties. At the close of each public hearing, you will know what the planning commission's recommendation is to the county board of commissioners. The county board of commissioners will then consider the request at their next regular meeting and will either grant or deny the request. I'm going to give a quick overview of our proceedings this evening. I will read the request. While I'm reading your request, I would ask that the applicant or the representatives and/or representatives come forward, take a seat up front at the table. The applicant and/or representatives will be asked to state their name and address for the record. Land services staff will provide a staff report for the request and read any correspondence that has been received regarding the request. The applicant and/or representatives will then provide any input, corrections, concerns, or comments. Once the applicant and/or representatives have provided their testimony, the planning commission will discuss the request and ask questions of staff or the applicant and their representatives. Upon completion of the planning commission questions, I will ask if there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this request. If there is, I would ask that the person come up to the podium up here. Please speak into the microphone because it's being recorded. State their name and address for the record and then give testimony. Items to note when providing comment, be as factual as possible. Neighborhood endorsement or opposition in and/or of itself is not a valid reason to approve or deny an application. In order for the planning commission to evaluate your comments, we need you to know your reasons for input on the application. All statements or questions must be directed to the chair, not to the applicant, nor will the applicant direct questions or statements to the public. Once all comments have been received, any questions posed to the chair will then be addressed at the end of the public, when the public hearing is closed. When all testimony is complete, I will close the public hearing. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further input from the audience, from the applicant or land service staff unless recognized by the chair or if one of the planning commission members wants some type of clarification. The planning commission will review and discuss the finding of fact criteria questions. The findings are a series of questions that the planning commissioner is required to address based on Minnesota statute and the requirements of ordinance. Based upon the answers to those questions, the planning commission will then vote on each question. All questions must be answered in affirmative by the planning commission to recommend approval of the request to the board of commissioners. The planning commission may also place conditions on the request if it is deemed necessary to remediate a negative finding of fact. Once the findings are complete, there will be a motion to recommend approval or denial of the request based upon the findings. That will conclude that public hearing and you can leave if you wish. Any follow-up questions should be directed to the land services staff during regular business hours. Thank you. And I guess for tonight, you guys are the lucky ones. You're just going to have to hold on for a second. We have to do election of our officers at this time before we get started here. So I guess we'll open up for officers. We need a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. Is there any nominations for a chair?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Lindgren.
I would nominate Clint Catherine as chair.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, nomination cease. All in favor of Clint Catherine being chair, say aye. Marv?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Myself, I suppose. Okay, Clint will be the chair. Nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marvin.
I'd like to nominate Brent Lindgren for vice chair.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Any other nominations for vice chair? Last one more time, any more nominations for vice chair? Guess we'll move the vote. All in favor, say aye for Brent Lindgren as vice chair. Marvin?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Myself as Clint is aye. Okay, secretary, any nominations for secretary?
You guys, that's the easiest job here.
Mr. Chair?
She does it all.
Go ahead, Brent.
I would nominate Marvin.
Any other nominations for secretary? Any other nominations for secretary? Last one more time, any more nominations for secretary? If no more, all in favor of Marv Trettle being the secretary, say aye. Marv?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Clint, myself is aye. Okay, elections are over. I don't think things changed much. So at this time, we'll move forward with our planning commission. Our first applicant at this time, the applicant and representatives for the applicant, Carmen Goldsmith of 2371195th Avenue, Randall. Application for an interim use permit to allow a kennel of up to 20 dogs for boarding and training located in the north half of section, southeast quarter of northwest quarter, section four, township 130, range 30, Darling Township. So if you'd please state your name and address for the record, please.
Carmen Goldsmith, 2371195th Avenue, Randall, Minnesota, 5647.
Okay, thank you very much. Guess at this time, I'd ask if land services staff would give their staff report.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Again, this is an application for an interim use permit for a kennel. The ordinance references is section 604.8, and that requires an interim use permit for a kennel, and section 1230, which contain the performance standards for kennels. Here's a plat map of Darling Township, and the red dot is the location of the parcel. And then here is the interim permit use request from the applicant. And then here's a site drawing also provided by the applicant. And then here are some aerial photos of the property outlined in blue. And then oblique image as well. The applicant lives on this 20-acre property, and a majority of parcel is enrolled in an A-Cub easement. Recent permitting on the property includes a conditional use permit to establish a campground. The applicant is requesting an interim use permit to establish a dog kennel. The kennel would offer boarding and training. No breeding or sale of dogs would occur. The business is proposed in phases. To start, dogs would be kept inside the home, and existing outdoor fenced areas would be utilized. Future plans for separate building are proposed. The total number of dogs to be housed between the house and detached building is 20. The property is served by 95th Avenue, and that's a gravel township road. The property is within a rural residential neighborhood surrounded by forest and agricultural fields. Much of the surrounding area is enrolled in an A-Cub easement. And here's a zoomed-out aerial photo of the area, and the parcel we're looking at is in yellow in about the middle of the page. Here are the performance standards for kennels. I'm not going to go through them, but I have them here as a slide if you need to refer back to them during your discussion. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives is agriculture, goal A2, objective 1; local economic development, goal C1, objective 1; objective 8; and then goal C2, objectives 1, 2, and 4; 7, 14, and 19. Twenty-seven notices were sent, and two comments were received prior to the public hearing. The first one was from Karen Shalanka. She stated she is against the request. She has a hard enough time containing her own animals. The goats, horses, and dogs get out, and no effort is made to collect them. Cannot walk near the home, or the dogs will chase her. And then the other one was from Keith and Danielle Yorick. They stated they live across the street, and they have concerns with current animals getting out and into their property. They don't believe she will be able to contain the animals on her property since it is not being done now. So those were the comments we received prior to hearing, and then here are your interim use criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Amy. One thing I'd maybe like to correct in this, in your report, 95th Avenue is a tar road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, would the applicant have anything to add, or any corrections or anything else to add to what was in the staff report?
Yeah, is it okay if I address the comments?
Go ahead.
I have had issues with horses getting out as well as goats. I got rid of all the goats because of it. Horses have been kind of an ongoing issue, part of its fencing issues with the ground. But I have not had issues with dogs running. Couple of years ago, I did have a dog run that was an abandoned dog at my house, and I ended up giving it actually to the Shalankas and have since brought it back to their place a couple of times. So I'm not sure what the dog comments are because my dogs aren't allowed to run loose. They're all in fenced area, so they can't chase anybody. The only other thing is I do have free-range birds, so they are out some.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant or staff at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Brent.
Question for the applicant. You talked about this going forward in phases. Can you explain to me what those phases might be?
Sure. Right now, I've only allowed a couple of dogs because I was told basically if I had more than a couple of dogs, I needed to have an interim permit. I didn't know if I really wanted to do this or not. But I've had a couple of dogs off and on for two, three years and actually love it. So I just want to be able to increase the amount of dogs that I have. And up to, I was looking at 12 with my current situation, which I've submitted pictures of my home area. I don't know, do you have those, Amy, that you can put up? I can kind of explain. They wouldn't load in order, so I don't, I'll have to explain what they are. So that's a picture facing down the hallway from my kitchen area. So dogs are allowed there. And I do have three dogs of my own. So this is primarily been their area. They also come into my house, but that's the kitchen area. Dogs are not allowed there unless they're like a small poodle or something that's non-shedding. I'm also looking into the kitchen. That's the area that goes upstairs to my rented rooms. More of the stairs. That is the garage area, and it has five-by-five kennels. I would be adding a couple more of those, as well as there's smaller kennels in there too. It's just more, this is all garage pictures, I believe. I did just add an epoxy flooring in there because it was concrete before, and it was a little bit harder to keep clean than, I still could clean it easy, but it was porous, so I added that to make it a little bit easier.
I think that's all I've got for pictures.
There should have been a couple of outdoor pictures of the kennels. Or the run area. That's still indoor, that's. That's the outside run. So from the back of that hallway, there's a door that goes out, and then towards the other end of the building, there's a door that goes into the garage. So dogs can be let out one door and back in the other door. And there's P-Rock in about half of that right now. That's just a smaller, well, it's still five-by-five, but it's shorter for small dogs.
I think that's, that's all of them.
That should be it.
Yeah.
So that's my current setup. I'm looking at adding a shed-type building, which I submitted a tentative plan for, but it's not set in stone. It was just kind of my first layout, but I'd be going for a building permit if I were to add that. So if I added that building, then I would be looking at the 20 dog. But I can't handle that many within my home, so.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Brent.
Just another follow-up question. Several months back, we did go over a conditional use permit for the bed and breakfast. Is it your intention to continue that along with this?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
If you recall, she withdrew the request for the bed and breakfast, and so the conditional use permit was granted for a campground, not the bed and breakfast.
So to clarify, is it your intention to continue that campground conditional use as well as the kennel that we're considering tonight?
Yeah, I'll just, I'm going to clarify a little bit more because I do have a couple of rooms that I rent Airbnb. They're not bed and breakfast rooms, they're just Airbnb or long-term rental. Like over the winter, I've had med students staying. And the campground was more, the reason for asking for it was in the event that I had someone stay Airbnb that had extra relatives that wanted to stay. But I would, I'd like to keep that permit, but I would not be having, originally it was to develop like four campsites across the property. I wouldn't be doing any of that on that side of the property. So I would possibly still have the option if somebody wanted to camp on the other side, but providing everything went well with the dogs, I eventually would not be doing that. It's just kind of the interim of, depending on how booked I get.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marvin.
On the same page in figure one, I was reading this, and I was trying to comprehend this, and you may respond to it, or Amy may be able to respond to it. It was, the applicant submitted after-the-fact interim permit to us here to continue bed and breakfast and a request for a conditional use permit for this property. And it was because land services received the complaint that bed and breakfast had not been established and no permitting on file. So afterwards, we granted this. Is that what happened on that whole situation, or is there more to it?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
What was brought to our attention is that a bed and breakfast had been established, and so that was the initial reason for the permitting. Then, as we were visiting at the development review team meeting regarding the process for securing an after-the-fact permit for the bed and breakfast, then the discussion of the campground came into play. And then after visiting with public health and the licensing thresholds and requirements that would be needed, then the decision was really to kind of scrap the idea and discontinue the bed and breakfast part of it, and then to pursue the campground part of it. We do not currently regulate Airbnbs. The part, the differentiation between that is in a bed and breakfast, you're serving meals, and that's where you get the food beverage and lodging licensure requirements.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marvin.
In that whole thing, it just seems like there's a lot of wheels turning in different directions, going not one specific direction. And it's, you know, hard for me to say, where is this really going? And just a comment, so thank you.
Can I add one thing to that?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say too, originally, I had advertised as bed and breakfast because of, I wasn't sure how else to advertise for Airbnb and rental. And mostly because of Google and like, how do people find you, sort of thing? And then after that, I ended up changing the name to experience because I wasn't technically serving the breakfast that was the threshold anyway. Maybe, I don't know if that clarifies at all, but.
Thank you.
Okay, you have any further questions, Marvin?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. John, you have anything?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
When I went through and was doing the research, I saw in the application that the property lines were referenced for distance. And it, I did find out in conversations with staff that the actual building or residence itself was 500 or more feet from the, any other pre-existing residence was 500 or more feet from the location. So that was my only comment, and it was our question, and it was solved during my lines of questions. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, John. Mr. Sish?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Back to the camping and the room rental. Yeah, I think during our August meeting, you were, it was clarified pretty well that it was room rental, no food provided, but at the same time, you'd indicated that guests were, would use your kitchen facilities and your bathroom facilities, whether they were camping or renting rooms. And I think the only condition we placed on it was that you should have a porta potty. I believe that was the only condition we placed on, and that we recommended that to the commissioners, and they approved that. I don't think they changed anything in conditioning. Okay. So yeah, along with what Marv was saying, a lot of wheels turning here. And, you know, I think of, you know, up to, you think you can handle up to like 12 dogs in the garage and kennel you've got? Something like that, you were saying? That's including your own? Your three, so there'd be your three and nine other dogs?
The request was for 12 commercial dogs. I don't know, a couple of mine are older, so I'm not sure how much longer they'll be around, but, but they don't necessarily have to be, they can be upstairs in the rest of my house, they're not necessarily with, with the other ones. I mean, they are if I only were to have a couple at a time or whatever, but they can be moved out of the kennel area.
Yeah. You know, personal concern of mine, it doesn't seem to be a real concern of public health or any veterinarian I talk to, but how do you, how would you juggle that? Kitchen use, 12 dogs, 15 dogs, whatever it is. And I'm assuming, I don't know, is the garage heated?
Yes.
And cooled, or?
Yes.
Okay, so there'd be a place to go. You know, it just seems to me that as a guest, I wouldn't want to be co-mingling with dogs.
Sure. You want me to address?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Um, I have calendars set, so basically if I'm, like say it's Fourth of July weekend, which is a busy one for dogs, I turn down, I think I turned down 20 dogs last Fourth of July. So a weekend like that, I can close my bookings for people, so I would not have people there at the same time. I basically just need to know my limits and know, the thing that makes things work is reviews. And so at this point, I have all five-star reviews, and I like to keep it that way. So if I'm booked with people, I may take a couple of dogs, but not 12. I don't know if that makes sense at all, but, and same with dogs. If people book for their dogs, they book ahead of time, and they pay a deposit for those dates, so I don't have to worry so much about, am I going to be booked? Am I not going to be booked? I know ahead of time.
Sure. Yeah, I suppose you haven't had your camper idea open long enough to gauge how much use?
Yeah, and I actually haven't had any campers yet.
Oh, you have not?
And I may not. I don't really know for sure.
Okay.
That's kind of like the last priority. It's more of an option if I get a call from somebody that says, hey, your rooms are booked. Can my grandfather stay here too because he wants to stay with us and he likes camping?
Yeah, I guess with the proposal you're making, I'd feel more comfortable if you said it was 20 dogs you were planning on, that it included your dogs, you know, in the number, or if it was 25 or whatever. Just so that you had facilities for that many dogs and a plan for that many dogs.
Sure.
Especially in conjunction with what you plan to do with the camping and room rental.
Yeah. I mean, I, if you wanted to include it, I could say 15 for the house and.
I don't want you to condition yourself to a point that limits your future business, you know? And if you were to build a separate facility that would house all the dogs, you know, then there'd be really no conflict, but, you know, and you wouldn't want to come in to change it from 20 to 25 dogs or from 15 to 20, or, so just for you to think on and for us to have a number.
Sure, sure.
That's my thoughts, anyway.
Yeah, I guess if it was including my dogs, I mean, currently, I would still probably say 15, and with a new building, it would depend for sure the size of the building, you know? But I guess at the biggest building that I would possibly build, I still don't foresee taking more than 25. That, the building that I submitted, I would, still would probably stick with 20, even including my dogs, so.
And even with a new building, you'd still probably be using the facilities attached to your home?
Somewhat, but I probably would be discontinuing having any campground.
Yeah, okay.
Or technical campground.
Sure.
I would rather, my goal eventually would be to switch to just having dogs, but it's not feasible to do that immediately and stop my other income, basically.
Thanks for clarifying that. Also, I think Amy sent you a copy of a kennel.
Yes.
Okay. Is that your intention to kind of follow those guidelines? I'm not sure that we could condition you to do that, but is that your intention to have that kind of facility that has climate control, concrete floors?
Yes.
You mentioned you epoxied the floor to make it more easily cleaned and kept sanitary.
Correct. And I mean, regardless if it's in my home or if I put up a new building, I'm going to be in there all the time, and I would like it clean myself because that's most of my day. The, there's multiple parts in that policy that she sent, and there are a lot of things in it that pertain to health, deceased dogs, things like that, which won't really ever apply because I'm not taking any rescue-type dogs. So I won't have any dogs that are, that basically become my property, that I've got to deal with putting dogs down or them aging out because they haven't found a home or that kind of stuff. So the dogs that are boarded are all other people's dogs. So those don't necessarily apply. All dogs that come in already have their shots, they already have veterinary care, they already have those things. I did give Amy a form that people fill out and sign off on veterinary care, just in the event that there was a dog fight or there was, their dog had a heart attack at my house or whatever, that I can take them in for veterinary care, as well as listing their own vet and emergency contact.
Mr. Chair, I've marked those as exhibits one and two. Mr. Chair, I've, I've marked those as exhibits one and two, there's three sets, so I'll pass them down.
But as far as the cleaning part, yes, it is my intention to, to basically, I mean, it is cleaned every day and the only thing that's not cleaned every day is the outside area because in the wintertime, that's difficult. You know, if a dog goes to the bathroom and it's snow out and, you know, and I still go out and clean it as, as I can and as the weather permits.
So dual question for you and Amy, um, manure management plan, normally I think of the feedlot officer. Who is the one that would be agreeing with a plan, uh, and who would monitor that?
Mr. Chair, this wouldn't fall under feedlot rules. Um, and so we would be looking at the sanitary disposal of animal waste and that, that usually the two would be proper composting or, or disposal in the regular garbage. Those would be the two methods that we would be, uh, looking to see are happening. Um, I'll get to the different slides. She did identify that manure management plan in this explanation right here is the manure management plan. And I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to what you, maybe in more detail, what you're looking to do?
Sure, I, I can just add a little bit. Um, right now I take stuff to the transfer station or the Morrison County landfill. Um, I've been researching like technical compost plans and I would probably be moving to that. Um, everything I read is that it's horrible to put it in the landfill, which I know is, is considered acceptable by, by standards or whatever, but to go to the other degree, it's better to compost it than it is to bring it to the landfill. So, um, that would be my plan would be to put up, to build a compost.
Would there be any required records? Would there be occasional inspections, uh?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead Amy.
It is a performance standard for kennels and so these are things that don't need to be conditioned because it is a requirement just on its face for a kennel. So anytime, you know, so anytime we want to check on the compliance with any one of those performance standards or any of the conditions that you would place on this, we would be making that, we would be making that assessment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're done Dave?
Yes.
Okay. I have a few, um, something to just think about, um, when we move forward with this. You know, we tie end date to these, you know, so just be thinking about that before we're done, we'll go through that with you. So on this permit, Amy, Amy, maybe I'll ask you, do we need an actual number? Cause you know, her number's changed already from the application to what we're talking. So do we have to kind of set in stone a number of dogs?
Mr. Chair, in this case, I, I would say yes. Uh, the application identified twenty dogs, that's what we advertised. We advertised that, um, for up to twenty dogs. It is a phased, uh, plan and, um, so I certainly, on most kennel applications, we have identified the total number of dogs that could be, um, housed. And so, yes, I would say it's consistent with every other kennel permit we've given.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Carmen, you're, um, so you know, you, basically it's boarding and then you had training, so what kind of training were you talking or?
Um, it's, it's basically the same, like, when people board, if they want to add training, there's an extra cost and I just spend time training with the dogs either.
Okay.
Depending if they pay for fifteen minutes a day or if they pay for, if the dog is there simply for training.
Okay.
So it's all, the numbers would be the same. If there was a training dog, that would be taking a spot.
So you look at most of your business being pretty much, let's put it simple, Airbnb for dogs? Or is it gonna be long-term care for majority of them or just short-term care? What, what's your plan with that?
Um, could you clarify that?
Okay, so, is most of your business gonna be where they come drop a dog off for a weekend or a week, where they go on vacation? Or is, what percentage of the business is gonna be maybe a month or two month boarding or any of that?
I very seldom get a dog that long. I think the longest anybody's ever brought a dog is maybe three weeks. So most of it, most of it's a weekend or I do have one dog that comes during the day and is picked up every night.
Okay.
Um, so I have, I've had like one daycare dog off and on, the, not the same dog, but.
Yep.
At times I've had one to two daycare dogs, but then they're gone for the weekend and I'm having other dogs, so. I hope that clarifies a little bit. Most, most dogs are there, I would say, there or will be in the future would be probably seven to ten days because it's usually when people go on vacation or need to go to town for something.
Okay. That answers, I was just seeing if it's something where, cause if there's breeding going on or any of that or they bring them for so long, that's, just wanna clarify that.
I could eventually, you know, one, one thing that I, especially if I had a new building, um, that I would offer probably to my clients is if they did have a, uh, say they're a newer person that, I mean, there's so many avenues to dogs, but say they're a newer person that's not, um, very, that, say they were, they have a breeding dog, they're getting into that, but they've never whelped a puppy or whelped a, old puppies, that I would possibly allow somebody to bring in a dog for whelping and I would help them with that. You know, but it's not, I'm not gonna have, I have Dobermans and I have had puppies.
Yep.
But I'm not currently having puppies with my own dogs and I don't plan on getting out any other kind of dog.
Okay.
Just love my Dobermans.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead Naomi.
Think when you foray into that, then you get into state licensing requirements and USDA licensing requirements. So you would be walking a very fine line with that. So I think, um, you need to be very clear on what your scope is going to be. And if it were to change, if you were going to start whelping dogs or start that, then, then you kind of get into another category and we'd need to revisit that permit.
And I understand that. I didn't, I guess, understand that that was included in state guidelines, but I have looked at state guidelines as far as knowing, you know, if I were to switch to rescue dogs ever or anything like that, that would require extra licensing. So any changes, I would be looking at that.
Okay. You guys have anything else at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Brent, please.
Um, this question's maybe directed towards Amy, uh, if you could answer this for me. Um, looking quickly here, the, the interim use, um, permit for the campgrounds, did that have an end date on that?
No, Mr. Chair, because that's a conditional use and so conditional uses do not require an end date.
Okay, and if you do not, by, by county rule, if you do not actually exercise that in a, in a what period of time, does it make it void?
If you do not act on that permit within two years, it does become null and void.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sish, you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, a quick question. So with that in mind of, you know, you might have a changing use of the kennels. Uh, so if you built new kennels, I'm assuming you'd build them to state guidelines probably so that they could meet any, any licensing requirements that might come in the future?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I guess I, I really have no intention of doing rescue dogs or anything of that sort. I, I think boarding and training are kind of, they're plenty. The, the only, I mean, the only way I could foresee probably changing to something like that is if, is if law enforcement or the county or somebody needed the extra room and, and requested that or whatever at some point in the future, which would involve the county as well. So, um, that's not the intention at this point.
Okay, so if you, I think you've answered this already, but if you were to build this structure, um, um, would you follow the guidelines that the state is putting forth? You know, heating, cooling, uh, kennel sizes for different sized dogs, uh, kennel runs, uh?
Yes.
Okay.
I think mine, everything I've listed is actually in excess of what the state requires.
Okay, so we don't need to condition it that way because there is no state requirements? Or we do need to condition it if we, if that's what we expected?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
What she is proposing right now does not require state licensing, so she's not subject to those minimum requirements. If you feel strongly that, that regardless if she meets the licensing requirement or threshold, that she meets some of those basic things, then I would suggest you put particular conditions regarding those because there wouldn't be any other mechanism to ensure that that happens.
Can I add one more thing, just real quick?
Go ahead Carmen.
I, I just wanted to say too, that, that part of the reason I have chosen to do this is because I would not take my dog to a regular kennel. Um, so I am advertised as a quality place that somebody that generally won't take their dog to kennels feels comfortable with. So because of that, like, it's, it's not a regular, what you would consider taking your dog to kennels. I mean, the, the care and the space they have is, is in far excess of what is required. And I, I plan for it to stay that way because that's, that's the reviews that I get and why people bring their dogs to me.
So if we were to make that as a condition, there'd be no problem with you? Okay, thank you.
Marv?
Mr. Chair, um, I was just going through the conditions that were kind of recommended here. I am assuming you read that on twelve thirty point five. And some of them, I don't think they really applied to buffer strip vegetation, buffer strip, uh, because of the five hundred feet, didn't hear complaints from the neighbors there. Uh, we, and it said restrict the number of dogs per minute and we sounded like twenty was the number we came with. But it also says restrict hours of use for outside exercise areas. I think that's kind of an important piece there because when you have your neighbors, next door neighbors, they're, uh, the shlankas, the yurks, uh, about, complain about dogs wandering and it can happen. Uh, so if you're restricting the hours, that is there in, I, another question that I wanted to also bring up, is there certain hours you would allow them bring in, bringing in and leaving? Uh, we didn't talk about the hours, did we?
We did not. Um, at this point, I do not have anything set specifically. Um, when I go to bed, the dogs are all put to bed and then they're in bed till morning. Um, and that varies a little bit, but generally dogs are not outside at night. As far as coming and going, people can drop their dogs off at any time as long as they let me know ahead of time when they're coming. Like, they have to book ahead of time so I know what numbers are. But then when it's the day before or a couple of days before, I ask them, like, what time are you expecting to bring your dog? They let me know, they pay for the day or till nine AM the next morning, so.
But I do think we should put a condition on, uh, for, um, the hours of ex, outside exercise so we could have a control over that, uh, in being a daytime hour, uh, that way in, in the event that dog would be wandering. Um, that is definitely something, uh, that I think we put an end date on here, but that's kind of, uh, something that I think might pacify some of the neighbors. I don't know what the rest of you feel, Mr. Chair?
I'll get to it after we get through the public part of it.
Can I add just one more thing? Um, and I don't mind having hours restricted for exercise time or whatever. Uh, my only issue I can see coming up with it is, you know, it's eleven o'clock and a dog really has to go to the bathroom. Like, I, I don't feel it's fair to force it to not go outside to go to the bathroom, if, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead Amy.
I think there'd be a difference between letting everybody out to run around and bark and, and, and all of that versus one dog attended to go and brought back in.
Okay.
I think that, I don't know that that's what you're getting at Marv.
Talking about the exercising, going out and by chance.
Yeah, the full rotation.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, well, let's move on to the public, uh, comment portion of this meeting and then maybe that'll drive some more questions or answers for us. Um, so at this time, we'll open the meeting to public comment. So if anybody from the audience would have, um, something to say either for this applicant or against it, please go to the podium at this time and, uh, state your name, um, and where you live for the record.
Um, Mike Jasmer, in two-three-five-two-three-ninety-fifth Avenue in Randall. Um, my wife and I are very concerned about this. Her, her horses have ran for years and she has not kept them at home. And we've even been told, been told at times when they're in our yard, one certain time that she was on vacation and there was nothing she could do about it at that time. We just wonder how these animals are gonna get handled there too? And if they're gonna be taken care of, so that's all I have to.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Cory Check, uh, we live at two-three-four-two-one-ninety-fifth Avenue, uh, two houses down. My concerns as well, um, are the animals being kept in the yard. Um, the only interaction that we've had with the applicant has been her looking for her dogs in the past. Um, and like when the other neighbors had written in about going for a walk past the residence, um, the one time that we've done that recently, the dogs that were in the yard had come out onto the street. Um, same thing, we have kids, I guess, that kind of concerns me when they're outside, when I got dogs running around. Um, I guess I've got trail camera pictures of loose dogs on our property. Um, two of them, I guess, a month ago appeared to be a Doberman, I don't know. Um, it's kind of a blurred picture that we had seen. Uh, we get a random dog every now and then, I don't know. Um, the other concern is, uh, at night, uh, the dogs are constantly barking and it's coming from that residence. Um, particularly, I guess, we have a yard light in our backyard, um, we have a wood boiler back there every time I go outside at night. Um, soon as the light comes on, the dogs start barking, they don't stop until well after the lights get shut off. Um, if the kids are outside playing, you know, being kids, uh, it seems like that energizes the dogs in the neighborhood and most of it is coming from that direction. My other concern is the waste, um, which you've kind of addressed, I guess. Um, that's gonna add up to quite a bit if you have twenty dogs on your property. Um, I guess that's a concern as well as, um, if you look at a top map, the lay of the land, um, the whole stretch that we live on per property is the lowest throughout that whole area right there. So all that watershed is going basically to the lower part of the backside of that property. And to the west of that, there's also, um, like three hundred acres of state wildlife management area back there. Um, so I guess if, you know, it's not cleaned properly, I guess, where is this all going, that concerns me as well. Um, it's, uh, it's not just the dogs. Um, I've heard from other people in the neighborhood about the horses. I haven't seen those myself, um, but the dogs have been there. Um, we've almost ran over a couple of the goats ourselves driving by. Um, she has or had peacocks on the property which have been loose, um, on the neighbors roofs, um, wandering the neighborhood as well, so I'm not sure if that's a concern as well or if they're even still there, I don't know. I'm not trying to be rude about it, but I guess the peace and quiet out in the neighborhood is a little bit. Um, I guess kind of a question for us and everybody else that's in there. Um, a lot of the questions directed to the applicant seem unsure. Um, I guess not maybe all thought through, I guess, I'm not sure. Um, I'm not against people having dogs and pets, but when the ones that you have are hard to contain, I guess that concerns me just a little bit. I guess that's about all I got, so I, for one, and my wife are opposed to it. I guess as long as, you know, there's conditions, I guess, that's one thing, but I don't feel that they're being met now, so. I'm opposed to it, so.
Okay, thank, thank you. Any more public comment? Any more public comment? I'll ask for the third and final time, is there any more public comment? If hearing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting to the public. Okay, we'll address some of those issues. That's why I wanted to kind of wait till the public kind of spoke. I had a couple of things myself. So in this plan, one of the things, you're gonna have all this fenced in, so let's say you have it in your garage now, or you're gonna build an actual building for it. You are gonna have outside fencing for exercise, right? The dogs aren't just gonna get let out of the house and run around while you're watching them.
Correct.
They're be fenced in, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Be the same fencing as what is up now, but added to.
Okay. So I think that's one of the biggest things, was to contain them, because of some of the things with past animals or whatever, you know, their person, I mean, it shouldn't be different, but it is, it's personal animals versus a business thing, okay? I can't really, we can't really regulate what goes on with your personal livestock or, or your, your own pets unless there's been an accident or a attack or something like that. But we can regulate this, because it's a business, okay? So that's why I wanted to ask that, fenced in area. The waste, now I'm gonna talk just a little bit, I haven't said much, but I'm gonna talk a little bit here. From my experience in ag for my whole life, you have twenty dogs, you own twenty acres, manure is not an issue. You got, it's sure it's swamp and woods, but you ain't gonna produce enough waste unless you throw it in a road ditch or out in the middle of the road. If you compost it, use it in gardening, round trees, shrubs, out in the back twenty, it's not gonna be an issue. I do like the composting idea you talked about. So we're looking through some of these conditions that were pre-written here for us, just to give us some examples. Marv alluded to a few of them. One was like a vegetation buffer. I know you live, there's some trees around you and all that, you're five hundred feet from basically what John has stated, that he did some investigation and found that you're five hundred feet away from other residences. I think that's non-issue. We gotta remember we're still out in ag. I went through all the goals and objectives that were listed here for us, and things that we wanna support ag, support efforts to build a strong and varied local economy that provides adequate employment opportunities, yada, yada, all this stuff. I can't find anything here where that's really gonna hurt or determine that, okay? Sort of, I don't wanna be blunt, or it ain't gonna determine my outcome of how I'm gonna vote here, but I live next door to an actual kennel, okay? And twenty dogs, you're not gonna let all twenty exercise at the same time, because they're not used to each other. I have twenty dogs, twenty-five dogs that live next to me, and when they feed them, it's loud, okay? I got neighbors all around me, because I live out in the country, the dogs bark every time a light's on, a car drives by, somebody shoots a gun, I start my tractor. It's just part of living in rural, rural Morrison County. But I think we have to make sure, so as moving forward, I think later on we get going, one of my conditions is gonna be that it has to be fenced in area. The dogs that are in, would be in this boarding facility, whatever you wanna call it, that they have to be fenced in and contained at all times. Or leashed. Personal dogs, that's different, but this is a business, and this is what we can regulate, so I think it, it just has to be because of, well, to protect yourself. The noise sucks, I know that, but we live out in country, I'm not gonna tell anybody that you gotta keep your dogs quiet, because I wouldn't have a neighbor left if I went around to all my neighbors and took care of their dogs, so. One thing on this, before we go to these questions, an end date, we gotta think about. If this would go through, what are you thinking about for an end date? Generally, it, we kind of like it when, when you no, no longer own the property. Or whatever you wanna choose, you wanna say ten years, twenty years, five years, but that, that's up to you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess you could say when I don't own the property.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on, you guys ready for these questions, or you got some more questions, or?
Mr. Chair, I recommended the hours for exercise outside, and that we need to put something down here. Here, I, I'm, I'm open to that, but obviously just during the day.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Amy.
In, in other kennel situations that we've had, the, usually the outdoor time would be limited, limited to, like I think it was seven thirty to six, is generally what has been conditioned before.
I agree with that, would have the rest of the board would agree with that.
Any comments? Okay, if not, we'll drop that down. You guys ready for the criteria questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Mr. Stish.
You know, I think back to your personal dogs. You know, you're, you're kind of putting yourself in a position of, you know, who's, you know, if a dog were to get away, like even your personal dog, you know, you know, I've got, my dog is never kennelled, or I shouldn't say never, but seldom kennelled. And every once in a while, a dog does show up on a property. I'm, I'm assuming that if, you know, if neighbors have complaints, they can readily call Land Services, if too much noise, animals loose, whatever.
Vic Hen, Mr. Chair, yes.
Okay, and I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, is it your personal dog, is it somebody else's dog? I think, you know, having your own personal dogs really complicates your kenneling business, I think. But I think you could manage that. Personally, I think that. Number of dogs, did you say twenty is where you're going? Twenty with your dogs included in that number? Is that a fair thing to restrict?
The doc, the application here, Dave Stish's is twenty dogs.
Yeah, what dogs are they?
Mr. Chair.
Twenty in this business, is the way I read it.
Yes, how I would assume would be, it'd be twenty dogs for boarding, because that's what puts her in a kennel situation, and the need to, and the, and the need to have a permit. Mr. Chair, I also wanna say, if you can, if you condition this for, I will have very little ability to, so if we have the fencing requirement, that's one thing, but if these dogs are roving all over the place, and she has an interim use permit until she no longer owns the property, and I don't have very clear condition violations, I will, I do not have much ability to, to revoke or to correct. So I think that needs to be very thoughtful. The other thing could be, this is the beauty of an interim use permit, is that if you aren't quite sure, you can put it for a smaller, the number of ti, you know, a smaller length of time, max her out at twelve, and say, we're gonna let you try this on, and see how you do. Instead of going for the whole twenty until she no longer owns the property. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because it is an option and some flexibility that you have within the interim use permit, if you, if you want to make sure that this is, that this is something that fits in this area.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Brent.
I think there, there was a plan put forward that this would ultimately be up to twenty with the expansion of another facility on site. So I think as we're looking at this now as it currently exists, there needs to be a reduction in that number as a condition at this point moving forward, because it is just the house and what's currently existing until you get to an expansion or you're going to build. And you said you had, how many dogs?
I have three.
Three, okay.
I requested twelve currently, twenty with the expansion is was my request. And part of the reason I requested that is because in talking with Amy, you can have as many of your own personal dogs as, like it's not part of a kennel, versus, like all the, all the restrictions are on a commercial dog.
Correct.
So if, if my dog's a commercial dog and I'm breeding it, it would count as a, as a dog that was under regulation. But if I'm not, then it's just a personal dog, a personal pet. If that makes sense? Maybe Amy can clarify?
No, that's exactly correct, Mr. Chair. The, if you, we do not have regulations on how many animals you can have. The only time that you cross that line is if you're keeping four or more for breeding or, or any sort of profit, then you reach the, the threshold of a kennel, and you would go through the same process she's going through. But if her personal animals are spayed and neutered and not used in any commercial way, they would not count towards this count that you'd be addressing in the permit.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Brent.
I guess I would propose a couple of conditions here. One, I think, might be limiting the total number of dogs to not exceed ten inclusive of her own dogs. And then that sunset date initially, I don't think should be all the way out with the ownership of the land. I think it, I think it almost needs to be tied to the other conditional, that'll sunset, if not used, in two years. And I think that would be kind of an approach, if it wanted to be expanded, if you found that this business was successful, it isn't something that's going to affect the neighbors, and it is harmonious for the neighborhood at that point, then you could decide, I'm going to expand, build, the complaints aren't there, there may be an opportunity for you to take it up to that twenty at that point. But I think we gotta limit it to a number inclusive of her animals initially, and then tie it to a specific date a couple of years into the future.
Can I?
Go ahead Carmen.
My plan was actually to build fairly soon. The only reason it's up in the air is financing, so I, I wasn't gonna go to the bank until I had a permit or, or whatever, because it would be beneficial to the dogs, it would also add a, like an indoor exercise park area for the community.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Marv.
I know there's a lot of things happening here, and I think we're all very concerned about, you know, your past track record with a few things here. But I believe everyone deserves a second chance, and how do we do this and control this and pacify the neighbors and, and possibly forward this? And how we go about doing this, I'm not exactly sure, but I do like some of Brent's recommendations here with that, and hopefully that pacifies the neighbors and we, the issues that you've had in the past are put to wayside.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Brent.
The, the campgrounds had an August two, twenty-two meeting of our board here, which, Amy, for clarification, two years out from there would be August two of twenty twenty-four.
That's correct.
And so I would, I would propose that to be the, 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 the time, sunset date on this, if it is to move forward or expand. That way we have an opportunity to see if it is successful and harmonious in the neighborhood, and then go forward from there. You said your timelines were somewhat similar to that? Financing for expansion isn't going to happen right away, is it?
Well, I would've went to the bank right away, yes. Yes, I would've, because I would probably be doing a significant amount of building myself. It might be a couple of years before the full building was up, but I would be starting on it right away.
Let me just clarify something. How long you been doing this with dogs already?
Two to three years, and...
And how many dogs do you generally have?
I have my own plus three.
So you've been doing this for a couple of years?
Yeah, three, probably.
Okay, and every week, it cha, I understand it changes, but you typically have three other dogs on average? Is that what you'd say?
Right.
So do you think that there's business out there to bring this to the twenty dogs immediately?
If I had more room, yes. And like I said, I turn down a lot of dogs, because I've got enough clients now that they're fighting for spots.
So here, here's my thing, I'm just gonna address to the board, you guys do whatever you wanna, I hear Amy, I hear you guys, but we have an application in front of us for twenty dogs. If I was her, if I didn't get this approved for twenty dogs, there's no way I would build a building. Okay, so now, if we condition it to ten, and then in two years you can go ahead, we're limiting expansion, we're limiting economics, so that's my whole thing. I would say, that's where I'm looking at. If, if we say twelve, she's stuck into her, into her, what she has now. And I'm all about, I want them fenced in. If I'm gonna vote for this to go through in my mind, I want a facility, I wanna be guaranteed that it's fenced in, so they ain't running around the neighbors. The noise is a factor, we're talking about times that they can be out and exercise, that oughta help a little bit, but I want it fenced in. So I want facilities, so that's just, I don't, I don't know, that's my thoughts on it. Otherwise, whatever. But we gotta kind of move on, I know this is important, but I think we just keep going over and over this stuff.
Chair, can I?
Go ahead.
Just one last thing. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the dog, the running complaints are about, because all of my dogs are fenced right now. I have not had, I have had loose horses, I have had loose peacocks, but I have not had any loose dogs. So I'm not sure if there's other dogs, I do know there's dogs straight across the road that bark continually, maybe people are hearing some of them, and I can't say none of my dogs ever bark either, I have three Dobermans, so. But they, I don't let them run at all. Years ago, they were free, and they ran off a couple of times, and they're too expensive to lose or to get shot, so they don't go anywhere. And I have had a couple of extra dogs at my house as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Brent.
I would still have my conditions listed here. I think it's hard to leave it open-ended on the timeframe to go with the sale of the property, not knowing if this expansion is going to take place. We, we don't know that, unless you condition that by moving this forward, there'll be a completion date of a structure and a facility, which I don't think you can. So I think the conditions need to be met moving forward in, in order to, for, for the county to address some of their issues moving forward as well.
So can we compromise and go a shorter time period, but go with the twenty dogs? Because what I'm looking at is for financial.
I, I get that, but I don't know that the infrastructure exists currently for that, to go right to twenty without the building and the infrastructure, so I think you kind of gotta limit that at this point, too.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Dave.
Perhaps it'd be just simple enough if we...
Perhaps it'd be just simple enough if we went along with our application, uh, which is twelve, twelve for now. And twenty when you have a facility, a new facility. So the triggering to twenty would be the new facility, once the new facility's in place. I, I don't know if we could condition it that way, I would think so, that'd be enforceable. And.
And we can put a shorter time on it.
Ability to do business and I agree with Clint, you know, that's a big investment, that building, you're gonna have a lot of money in that.
So, so Brent, what timeframe would you be looking at? If it's worded like Dave said, twelve, like which is close to what you were saying.
Well, you wouldn't really need a timeframe, you just need twelve dogs until you have facilities enough to accommodate twenty. I think that's simple enough.
I don't know that that gives staff the opportunity to address issues moving forward. Um, cause you're just gonna blanket condition it now and then it's, it's gonna move forward. Or it's not and uh, to address the, the concerns of the neighbors and uh, the individuals around the area. Um, this behooves the applicant to make sure that things are uh, above board and, and run well and kept well. And if all of those things move forward, there, there won't be any issues.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Amy.
It really comes down to whether or not you want to build in a checkpoint with this. To say, alright, we're, we have, we have twelve until the building is built and then we've got twenty, but now. But we're going to have the end date on this for, I'm just throwing this out three years. And, and then we're gonna need to revisit this and check to see if, if this is, and then she would need to renew the permit. And at that time, then she could revisit if she wanted to increase capacity at that point as well.
Mr. Chair, I think Brent recommended two years for rather than three, I would be for that.
Okay, let's move on to the questions.
Point of clarification on that last remark, please, Mr. Chair. Uh, this, that would be an application for then.
Yep.
Yes.
I, I think that's unnecessary, but go ahead.
Okay, and the criteria questions. The use will not be, will not put excess burden on roadways, utilities and public facilities such as parks and schools. Um, we'll start with John.
Yes.
Can he explain?
Mr. Chair, just as a reminder, we are giving explanations for the questions right now and then we'll go back a second time and vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So this would be, nope, that's okay, this would be your reasoning um, for what your vote is going to be when we circle back.
Oh, uh, there was no evidence given of uh, any excessive burden on the roadways, utilities or public facilities at this point.
Okay, anybody have anything else to add to question one?
I'd just like to point out, Mr. Chair, that the applicant answered the question quite well about excessive burden and the amount of traffic that there might be.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Brent.
Uh, just moving forward for clarification, um, I, I kinda wanna know what conditions we have that we're looking at as we answer these questions.
Okay, Amy, can you read them, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, so what I have or what, what my understanding is, is of the conditions that you're keeping in mind as you're voting. Uh, would be the hours for the outside exercise of the dogs would be between the hours of seven thirty AM and six o'clock PM. And that the kennel, the outdoor kennel area must be fenced. Um, that the uh, the cap for boarding animals within the existing home would be twelve. And then once the building is built, it would go to twenty. And then the interim use permit would sense sunset on, in August twenty twenty-four and I, I have to get that exact date. But that, I would just say end of August twenty twenty-four, that's what I have down, did I miss anything?
Okay, does that satisfy everybody or if not, I guess at this time we have to get it done if, if to vote on these?
No, I just wanted clarification on what it was so that we have that in mind as we're going through the criteria questions.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, and anybody else have anything for question one? If not, we'll move on to question two. Um, question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Nor impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant properties um, for use predominantly in area, Marvin?
Uh, it would without the conditions and uh, and right now I'm saying because of the conditions uh, that are in play. Uh, it wouldn't impede uh, the enjoyment of uh, other individuals and purposes in immediate area like that. Or de, development of surrounded property.
Okay, thank you, Marv, anybody have anything to add to question two? If not, we'll move on to question three, um, this will be for Mr. Stish. The use in the opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use.
Well, um, there's very few um, guidelines, but uh, does meet all the setbacks and um, the um. I think her answer was a pretty good answer to the questionnaire also, uh, the area of intended use is all within the immediate proximity of the home, set and yard. And um, yeah, and she's got a, she's, there's a need for this business, um, she's got, seems to be a pretty good list of current clients and future clients. Um, um, existing land use is uh, people with dogs. Uh, most, most folks seem to have a dog these days and most dogs bark uh, from time to time. There certainly is a possibility of this not fitting in and, but there is a system in place to respond to complaints. And um, and um, enforcing of those complaints, so um. Yeah, it is consistent with the uses of the zoning ordinance, um, or we're in, we're on the.
Three.
Yeah, number three, is related to uh, existing land use. And with a manure management plan in place and not all that much manure being uh, uh, generated. Groundwater, surface water, air quality should be addressed, sound, you know, noise would be the big issue, possible issue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stish, anybody else have anything to add to question three? If not, we'll move to question four, it'll be for Brent. Um, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use.
Um, kennels are uh, approved in the zoning district, this is agricultural, it does fit in uh, with uh, with that. Um, many folks are, are needing a place to board their animals, it is a business that is needed in, in the area and all over the state. So yes.
Anybody have anything else to add to Brent's answer? Okay, if not, we'll move to question five, I'll take that one. The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. When I, when I look through um, you know, our, our goals and objectives, I can't find one in there that would uh, where it would be a uh, conflict. Um, I think with her answer, I kinda also liked her answer that she wrote down, reading through that. You know, when you, when you talk about uh, you know, we don't necessarily have a regulated manure plan for. Per se, this type of business, but she has one in place, I think that's great. Um, with her uh, with her uh, she has a plan to use stuff to take away the odor and things like that, so I think that's great. So I think with what her plans are as far as the get rid of the waste. There is no conflicts with the goals and objectives that are stated in this packet that I can find. And uh, with some of the steps she's taken, I, I think uh, I could, yeah, yes, there is not a conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Anybody else have anything to add to question five? Okay, if not, um, you guys ready to vote? Now you guys remember the conditions that you're all fine with them, then?
Would you mind reading them one more time, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, the hours for outside exercise is seven thirty AM to six PM. The exercise area must be fenced. Uh, dog limit would be twelve while in-house boarding is occurring. And increase to twenty when a separate building is built. And the interim use permit will sunset August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, we all satisfied?
I'm not real happy about August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, but I don't know what.
Yeah.
What argument is on that, I, there, you can't yes or no vote that.
Okay.
I just think that's too constraining and expensive or.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure, real quick.
Uh, so the sunset date would be to come back here and review?
Essentially, you'd be granted the interim use permit until then and then you'd need to reapply for the permit, okay?
Okay, so the one question I have with that is, so if I come back, is there, have to be founded issues at that point? Or can, is it a whole new process just like this where I put up a hundred thousand dollar building and all of a sudden I can't use it?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Amy.
It would be this, it would be this process again. So the public notices would go out, the public hearing would occur. And, and then the recommendation from the planning commission would happen and then the county board would ultimately grant or deny. Same process.
Okay, so my, my only point I wanna make with that is. If, if there's complaints, you do have the ability to come out and enforce them, correct? Or um, investigate them?
I do, um, I have, I would have, um, but if barking is an issue. And it's loud and they're all contained inside and you've been abiding, I don't have any, I don't have any ability on that because there isn't a condition for that. So it would, so the, there would be, it depends on what the complaint is and whether or not I'd have any ability to remedy that. Through, through my ordinance or, or anything like that, it would have to be a violation of one of your conditions.
Okay.
In order to really kinda put your permit in jeopardy.
Correct.
So basically, if you didn't have the fence in area and the dogs are running loose all over the neighborhood, that would be a justifiable complaint. The hours of the exercising, if you're constantly letting dogs exercise at midnight and making tons of noise, that'd be a, a substantiated complaint. Basically, that's probably about it on the list, right? Or, or if we limited to twelve dogs and we, your neighbors complained, you have twenty-five of them in your garage. Because you don't have the new facility, them would be things that would uh, go against you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Amy.
And I, and I know um, where Brent was going was the, the sunset date on the campground. And, but we are almost a year into that and so if you wanted to, you could maybe kick that out to a two-year timeframe. Where the sunset date would be instead of one year essentially from now, it would be two years from now, just something to think about.
Well, and my only comment with that was just that, you know, if I put up this building, I have like a ten-year loan, so to pay for it.
Well, currently, uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Brent.
Well, currently, that sunset date would be a year out basically from this August. And so if there isn't um, any issues moving forward and you wanted to expand that business, you could. Again, we're a recommending board to the county board. So if the county board, when they review this, wants to change or drop that, they certainly can. So I would say just leave it the way it is and move forward and uh, the board, board is intelligent enough to make their own informed decision on how they wanna move forward, so leave it as it is.
Yep. Okay, we're gonna vote. Question one, the use is not in, put an excess of burden on roadways, utilities and public facilities such as parks and schools, John?
Yes.
Brent, Marvin?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant properties for uses predominantly in area, uh, Marv?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Uh, myself, Clint is yes, John?
Yes.
Okay, question three, the use in the opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use. Um, and then environment, groundwater, surface water and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. Um, Dave?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Clint, myself is yes, uh, John?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Okay, question four, that, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Brent?
Yes.
Uh, myself, Clint is yes, John?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay, question five, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Uh, myself, Clint is yes, John?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Okay, looks like we answered all the questions in affirmative. So would somebody wanna make a motion to approve or deny this application? Recommend approval or denial of this application?
Mr. Chair, I'd make that motion. To, with, with the, what did we have, four, correct? With the four conditions that we move this forward to the county board for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and made and seconded to uh, recommend approval with the conditions. All in favor, say aye, uh, Marv?
Aye.
Uh, Brent?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
I was uh, right recorded that I'm not in favor of the uh, of the twenty twenty-four renewal.
And I'll be an aye also. Okay, so we're gonna recommend, we approved recommendation that the commissioners would approve this. Um, and they'll be doing that at their county board meeting on March fourteenth. Um, so um, if you have any questions after tonight, please uh, give Land Service a call and they can help you through them. Or, or if you wanna go to the commissioners' uh, meeting, you're more than welcome to, you don't have to, so.
What time is that meeting?
The meeting is at nine o'clock in the morning, but I'm usually not first on the agenda. So, and that agenda comes out the Friday prior to, so if you wanna check with me like Friday afternoon, I can tell you what time the item will be on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any old business? Or new business, I guess? No, we did elections, so we don't have no new business, unless you have something, Amy, I don't think so, no.
No, Mr. Chair, I do not have anything.
Um, old business, I don't know of any, so kinda push that along. Um, I guess we just have our minutes that we need to approve.
Mr. Chair, I move uh, that we accept the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded to uh, uh. Approve the December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two minutes, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Approved. I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, adjourned. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven...